Um, let me ask around tomorrow. So yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we can talk more about it, Doc. Thank you.
Are you the new news reporter?
I thought you might be, I guess.
Just for Loudoun County, Haley's still doing this.
Kayla used to be here.
She is, but since there's two of us now, we're just divided.
And they're both named last name Mark?
Yes, but we're not related.
I'm confused.
I'm from Black County and I hate weird. It seems like every other person has named is Mark and I'm not related to him.
That's probably good, more or less.
I don't know if you want to make a shot with the rest.
There you go.
But I'm glad you're here.
Now he wants these.
What?
He wants these.
Who cares what he wants?
She knows kids.
Now tell me what you want.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting for November 6th, 2023 to order. Before I turn it over to Jim Jenkins for the public hearing, I'd like to recognize Ms. Brewster here and her class, the Loudoun County Government Class. Would you stand up and be recognized? Thank you for being here and thank you for being interested in county government. We appreciate having you here. Jim Jenkins, where are you?
First item is a resolution amending the municipal and regional subdivision regulations of Loudoun County, Philadelphia, bring back and plant regions of the Moore City and Loudoun. Appendix two, construction methods, three seasonal limits.
Okay. Any comments?
Asphalt.
It's where we're adopting TDOT's regulations to be able to pay below 50 degrees.
That's correct.
We'll vote on it in just a few minutes.
The second is a resolution adopted by the Loudoun County, uh, Loudoun County Commission closing the end of Silo Drive located in Silo Acres, located in city legislative district of Loudoun, Tennessee, highway apartments, wherever it may be.
Little paper road between Silo Acres and Misty Ridge, all four neighboring residences are, good to go.
Okay, we'll put it on, it'll be up in just a minute, Jim. Okay, now, general public comments on public hearing, I've got two sheets here, I'm gonna try to do my best to decipher it. First up is Jane Everett.
I live on Old Stage Road, as I've told you all before, been there 46 years. There used to be three cars going by my driveway every day. And now it's a traffic champ, which I'm sure you all know that. But we've had a couple of offers of people wanting to develop the land that's in question now. And those have gone by the wayside. But I feel very strongly that this person that's dealing with us now is gonna do what he says he's gonna do. There was only one other question that I would like to open up and I don't know if you discuss it at this point or later, uh, is signage. And, um, that's something I would like to discuss. And my daughter could not be here tonight and she feels the same way I do. In the ideal world, we would never do anything down there, it'd be the way we've been here. But you know and I know, Victory Junction is booming like romantic city and everywhere else. So, um, we do not oppose the storage. And, um, we've done some research on their stuff and was very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, since I got to speak first, I had a massive stroke 10 years ago and I could not talk, I could not walk, and I could not do anything. My husband always thought that he had been blessed since I couldn't talk. But I told him.
Good for you.
That is amazing recovery from a stroke.
Hard work.
John Martin.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak, I'm John Martin, living at 13811 Old Stage Road. I wanted to state again that my wife and I support lifting the agricultural zoning stipulation for the property there in discussion at the corner of Old Stage Road and, uh, Lee Highway, Highway 11. And with the way that the owner has been working with residents, dealing with us listening to our concerns, I, we do not oppose a self-storage unit there as it's being proposed with the buffer zones, the plantings, Shipley Lane being closed to traffic in and out of the facility and also Old Stage Road, no entrance or exit there. When the time comes to discuss plantings, I am hoping that there will not be, uh, any plantings that are really prone to disease, like Leyland Cypress, there are other evergreens that could meet the need and the stipulation of, um, screening and beauty. And, uh, Mr. Verson, I know, has been working very hard upon, uh, variety of planting options. And I am grateful the owner has agreed to allow the land owners whose land joins property in question to plant what they would like. That, of course, is a, going to be a huge expense for him. But it is his property and he should derive the economic benefits from it. I can think of nothing that would disturb us less than the limited access that self-storage units provide. Even living in myself, my wife and I putting, having to put our things in storage, as I had mentioned earlier, and then not even being able to get back to bother anybody for months and months and months. I think there will be a lot of people that way. I believe that's all that I want to say. I again appreciate you all, um, listening to us and, and again, we want something good for everybody concerned in the area.
Ben Mullins.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'm Ben Mullins, I represent the, uh, the owner and applicant. I have larger copies of the site plan if I, if anybody wants to see those, I know I emailed them around earlier as well. You all.
Vacation photos.
I, I do appreciate the comments and, you know, I, I've been in front of you several times now talking about this project and, and I've spoken to anybody who's willing to talk to me about this, I've, uh, uh, reached out to Mr. Martin, I've reached out to Mrs. Alfalter, I've reached out to many of the neighbors, uh, some of them always haven't wanted to talk to me, but I've, I've tried anyway. Just trying to make sure that, uh, they're heard in this process. I know this, this piece of property has gone through several different, uh, iterations of things that wanted to go on it in the past and, and nothing has been able to get approved there, or at least, uh, after it got approved, to move forward with any valid concept. But we're really hopeful that, uh, this is the right use for this property. No one is, like I said, a big fan of self-storage, but they're obviously very necessary, people use them, there is a demand for them. And they are the least intensive commercial use you can put on a piece of property like this. They don't have traffic coming in and out regularly, uh, you know, it's, you know, what can go there now with the agricultural stipulation, agricultural retail, could be a lot more intensive. There could be a rule king putting that piece of property right now with his current zoning, uh, you know. So, we think this is, that's not what my client wanted to do when he bought it, he was attracted to it because it did have the commercial zoning attached to it, but he wanted to do something different, he explored different options before finally settling on this one. And I've heard a lot of objections, I'm sure you all have too, about, about concerns about stormwater, about, uh, concerns about, you know, traffic in the access and potential sinkholes on the property. All of that gets solved once we get the engineering done, we start working with, uh, Mr. Jenkins and, and Loudoun County codes. That's when you really start putting the rubber to the road on those issues and that'll come back through Planning Commission through a site plan. And those issues will get addressed, as will there be more detail as to exactly what the layout's gonna be, what the access is gonna be, what the signage i- is, is gonna be, I mean, we have a, a sign depicted right there at the entrance and certainly they're, they're, that's gonna be a natural placement of the sign, that's the only place we have on a sign on this plan right now. But that'll get worked out again throughout the process and I will be talking to the neighbors throughout that process as well. But the most of the objections I've heard aren't really what we are here to decide today, it's really just to move that stipulation and let us get to what we can come forward and spend the money to really engineer a full site plan. So, I would appreciate, uh, consideration for that. On the landscaping, that 25-foot buffer is gonna remain, we're not asking you for that to be taken out. Exactly what gets planted in there, we'll, we'll, we're willing to work with the neighbors on that. We've talked to Mr. Martin and Mrs. Alfalter about that very extensively. I know Mrs. Alfalter would want like a single evergreen hedge on Old Stage Road and if that's the will of, of this body, then, then we'll, we'll, we can agree to that. But I, I do think, well, my landscape architect, he, he believes kind of a diverse hedge would be probably better and still obtain the same degree of visual mitigation as a, as a single, uh, evergreen hedge. So, we're, we're open on that, um, but we, again, that's something that we can have more details when we come forward. I really appreciate, uh, everybody's consideration, if you have questions, I'd be willing to ask, answer them. Uh, but we would ask that we, uh, remove this stipulation, let us move forward with the site plan for, for the, uh, a, a fully detailed site plan for these self-storage units and we'll continue to work with the neighbors every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Hanson.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners and all of the people present. I think it's time to, uh, speak quite succinctly and directly. And that, uh, at the last October, uh, second meeting, Ben Shaver said in so many words, "After 20 years, he's getting tired of talking about this sucker." Well, um, we've been following each other along in age here for 20 years, it's about time we move on and do something else. I agree. I, um, I support that, uh, we go ahead with the, uh, proposal to change it from, uh, rezoning with the condition that it be legally binding, that there be no ingress or egress on Old Stage Road or on Shipley Lane. That's, that's number one. And number two, um, that we keep the 25-foot vegetation boundary and that that also be as concretely, as legally binding as possible. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Sheila Woody.
Good evening, everyone, um, my name's Sheila Woody and I'm here to represent, uh, my daughter, which she's not, they will be here, and myself. And being a resident there on Old Stage Road for many years, um, I am still not in favor of these storage units. You know, I've heard a lot of talk back and forth that, you know, a couple of, um, ideas have been brought in front of you all that have been turned down, but the way I see it, I mean, they were turned down because they wanted access from Old Stage Road and Shipley. I, I don't know about Highway 11, but we know that that's not ever gonna happen. And this is the first option that's come up that has entered off of Highway 11, which, you know, that makes sense. And I know this property is ready to get developed. I mean, it's close to nine acres and, you know, I, I realize that is, I was sitting there looking at it today, the traffic light there, Dixie Ridge Junction and, you know, it, it is nice to look at those trees and whatnot, but, I mean, I'm realistic, it's, it's ready for something. But in my opinion, I, I think there's gotta be a better fit than, than self-storage buildings that can enter off of Highway 11. I said 321 earlier, I'm sorry. And I realize, you know, he paid 600 and something thousand dollars for it, um, but, you know, that was on his, I mean, that he made his business decision based on that, he knew what the zoning was. So I'm, I'm here to say tonight that I am against it and I believe that there can be other uses for this property and enter off Highway 11 because of, Old Stage Road is so busy and Shipley, you know, that's just, I'm thinking, oh man. But anyway, that's all I have to say and, uh, we need to get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last name for Highway 11 is Michael and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Verson.
What was your last name? What was your last name?
Yes, my name is Michael Verson.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, uh, I was, my office was, uh, asked to be involved in the design, the conceptual design of the site plan and the landscape, uh, requirements for this particular project. And, um, I would say we, we do quite a few projects and this one is well-suited as far as compatible uses. Always a bit of a crutch when residential goes up against any kind of development. But as Mr. Mullins said, uh, storage units are, are one of the most benign that you can have, unless we want to put a cemetery, but even that, that has traffic for visitors. The property itself also helps the adjacent neighbors. If you look at the drawing on, uh, the sketch, there's a section to there and it shows that there are two things that are advantage to the neighbors. One is there be properties, they're heavily wooded between them, which is more than a buffer that you can actually place. And many of the properties rise up and then the final development will be lower so that the land itself screens the property usage. The layout is set up so there's only one entrance and the, the Shipley Road, which is always a concern, and Old Stage, will not be impacted. Once we got a layout done, we worked on the other requirements of landscape, which is set up as far as an ordinance and have to be met. Certain number of trees, a, a definitive buffer requirement is set. What we've done is projected, projected a concept of a landscape which extends well beyond what is required as far as buffering. The owners also asked us, and we have worked with the neighbors, Ben has contacted all of, we've had a couple of meetings, one is a Zoom meeting and one on-site. One, we, you always get different kind of inputs, one has said, "I'd like to see this kind of a plant," one would have to see the other kind of plant. And the decisions that we'd like to approach is to make sure that one would create a dense, uh, screening for the neighbors and use plants that are appropriate and aren't diverse because when one, sometimes, one would get, uh, a disease, it spreads to the other. We also need to really think of this, it's not just a screening for the neighbors, it is really a streetscape for your community. So we would like it to read as a streetscape and not just a hedged-up, uh, prison on the other side, so to speak. That's really all I have to say, if you have any questions, while I'm standing here, I'd be glad to go for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the public comments on the Highway 11 rezon. Mike, Jim, and Jan Hahn, I haven't forgot you, I will cover that because it's Dry Valley and Dr. Hahn wants to talk about a healthcare training facility. We'll do that under general public comments in just a few minutes. I've asked Commissioner Whitfield to open our meeting tonight.
I'd like to give a pledge. Salute, pledge.
Let us wish the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's about your hands, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to serve Loudoun County. I, I'd like to thank you for our young, uh, folks that are here today, our, our Loudoun students. Come from a great, uh, community, great school. I'd like for you to ask, I'd ask you to watch over our first responders, uh, keep them safe as they, uh, do their jobs. Ask you to watch over our military, those serving here at home and abroad. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Hey Tammy, call the roll.
Randolph.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jenkins. Quillen. Here. Satterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
There.
Waller.
Present.
Okay. Next up is the adoption of the November 6th, 2023 commission agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the commission that my, my A item, which is the Old Stage Road issue, be moved up to the C under Jim Jenkins. This is still his realty because we just postponed it 30 days. He's here, he's, he'll be here for that and I don't want to keep him all the way down through the other part of it. So, if the commission would be okay with that, I'd like to move that up to C under Jim Jenkins.
Okay, move that under C, under Jim Jenkins.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Do we have a second?
Well, no, I'm going to have a brief.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make most approve the agenda as it's been altered.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is the reading and acceptance of the October 2nd, 2023 Loudoun County Commission minutes.
Chairman, the minutes presented to us ahead of time, I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to read through them diligently. I'll make a most approve of the minutes as they were written.
I'll take them.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to approve the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna call for just a short point of order with everybody and you all chime in. I'm not exactly sure what to do. You just said that we had a speaker that wanted to speak to something that's not on the agenda. Under the new state law, any conversation at this meeting is supposed to be relevant to the agenda. Things that aren't are supposed to come to workshop as we discussed at the last meeting. I, I'm not saying we should, I'm not a big fan of the way the new law is written, but we have, we've not let people speak in the past under the new law about things not on the agenda. What's, what's the thought or the favor of the commission on that particular thing?
I can ask them to come back to the workshop.
I think we either have to open it up all the time or we don't all the time. I'm not recommending with one or the other, but the new law says it has to be relevant to the agenda.
It has to be your main.
Who is speak, what, it's, who is, uh, wanting to?
Mike Colacone, Jim Self.
No, Colacone's his own, uh, Gary's got his own. It's, it's whatever Dr. Hollins won't talk about, something about healthcare or something.
Yes.
There's nothing about that on the agenda.
Tell me what y'all want to do, I-
I, I, I'm, I'm moved that we stick with the state law for the time being.
Yeah, once you start moving it, we're back to the old conversation.
Where's Dr. Hahn at? I saw him somewhere. Do you understand what we're talking about?
Yeah, this is just for information.
Well, tonight needs to be about what's on the agenda. Come back the 20th and you can get up and just ramble on for a whole five minutes about whatever it is, but, uh, we're kinda got our hands tied a little bit on this one.
I understand that, that's-
Thank you. Sure.
Mike and Jim, you okay with that?
No. They can talk, Gary's got the annexation on here.
There it is, sorry.
It's only a-
Mike, come on up.
So we doing a better than we were, six?
He's up.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Good evening, me, Brad Shaw, President Cullen and members of the Loudoun County Commission. I'm Mike Colacone, I live in, uh, James Ridge Estates. As you know, I've already expressed my opposition to the city annexation and rezoning of the property on Dry Valley Road. And I know many people in the area have done so as well. I have little to add tonight, except, uh, I just want to bring to light the Tennessee law, uh, 6 dash 51 dash 104 D4 is explicit that the municipality will work in cooperation with the county in which the territory is located and that the municipality shall, and this is the operative word, shall enter into an interlocal agreement to provide emergency services and maintain bridges and routes comprising of the primary route to the area. So I just wanted to bring that to light, um, for anybody who is here, um, who was opposing this so that they know, um, that you have the right to get into an interlocal agreement. Contrary to the city planning, uh, opposing the annex, our inside sources tell us that the city is still going to, or planning to annex, um, the property on Dry Valley Road, okay? It is intuitively obvious to the casual observer that the county residents cannot rely on the city of Loudoun to protect the property rights of those residing in the city. Residing, not residing in the city, I'm sorry. That being said, I just want to express my sincere gratitude to this body for intervening on behalf of the county residents in James Ridge Estates. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Self.
Thank you. My name is Joe Self, I'm president of the James Ridge Homeowners Association and we're speaking to item nine on the agenda, which is the annex, proposed annexation and rezoning of the property on Dry Valley Road. Speaking for the James Ridge, uh, residents, uh, we are opposed to this annexation and rezoning. And I want to give you some of the reasons and I'll stay within my five minutes. We, uh, we moved here for the peace and quiet that we have on James Ridge Road now. If this is rezoned to M1, uh, almost anything can be built there. And M1 zoning allows agricultural processes, lumber and wood manufacturing, and even a truck turmoil can be smelly and noisy. So we're opposed to this kind of thing right adjacent to James Ridge subdivision. Uh, Dry Valley Road is not designed for truck traffic, commercial or industrial truck traffic. It's a narrow, kind of winding road. And if the plan is to access this property off of Robeson Springs Road, I don't see how anybody could make it work turning under the interstate there and then back into this property. There's just not room to make that happen. Annexation is best done when property is contiguous to a city. This property is not contiguous to the city of Loudoun. No industry has indicated a need for this property at the moment. The only benefit we can see is that it would raise the value of the owner's property at the expense of us in James Ridge and the other neighbors around. So that just doesn't seem equitable to us for that to occur. The city of Loudoun has some land, already zoned- The city of Loudoun has some land already zoned M one that it can use if somebody wants it. There's also other land inside the city that is either commercial or not zoned, that could be zoned M one. And they wouldn't have to do spot zoning and jump across private property to zone this property. I, I haven't driven by any of the commissioners' houses, either with the city or the county. But my guess is, you would not have chosen to build next to an M one industrial park. So we're opposed to that rezoning and annexation. And that's why I'm here tonight and ask for your support to oppose it as well. And I'm here to answer any questions you have to me about that.
I think I can say with great confidence that this entire commission is against an M one zone in that area.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I can give, give you a little bit of update. I had a meeting today with Mayor Harris. And first of all, I want to thank all of y'all from James Ridge, Prospect Church Road, the city has heard your voices. So we, we, like I said, we had a meeting today. One proposal that the mayor is looking at, and will be talking to his city council about is probably annexing the property into the city. But looking at an R one zoning, which is a residential zoning, a maximum two units per acre. And he's going to be talking to his residents. I think, you know, we're going to probably end up looking for a subdivision. One thing that I have asked the city for is a interlocal agreement that says if you do annex this and you do rezone it to R one, that it's set forever, when nobody knows what's going to happen to us all tomorrow. The mayor agreed with that. I have reached out to Bob Bowman, our county attorney, today. Mayor Harris is going to reach out to Chris Frye, their attorney, today. We're going to get those two folks together and see if we can't work out some kind of interlocal agreement that will protect that party or protect that property as an R one residential zone. So just a, just a short update, that was a meeting today. We'll have other meetings. I still encourage you to go to the city workshop on the 13th of this month. Make your voices heard. But I can assure you that Mayor Harris, the city of Loudoun has heard your voices. They, they are very concerned, and every indication I got from the mayor today is that they are no longer interested in an M one zoning for that piece of property.
That would be great. If they, if the owner had proposed R one, I wouldn't be here.
That's right. That's right.
So that's where we are.
So that, that's every indication I, I got from the mayor today that they will no longer seek the M one zoning for that piece of-
My concern is, once it's annexed, they can change it, but if they'll do this interlocal agreement-
They'll do the interlocal agreement.
And do it in writing that it would never, forever be changed from residential.
That'll protect, that protects the county. Right, that protects the county, protects you folks, and I think everybody would be happy with that. So we'll, we'll continue to move forward. I do still encourage you to be at their workshop.
We will be there.
And, and to continue to make your voices heard. But I think we are headed down the right, the right path. And I'm going to be honest, I'm, I'm really excited with the opportunity for the Loudoun City, Loudoun County, county residents, all work together, because I think we can accomplish a lot if we can continue down this path.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm going to assume Gary's handling his part right now, so. I like, I like what I'm hearing. I like this, what we're doing right here. The interlocal agreement is a, is a must.
Sure.
Otherwise, we've just got somebody, and councils change every two years.
That's right.
Mayors change every four years. I mean, things happen. The interlocal agreement puts it down ironclad, even though we've been told they're not worth the paper they're written on, right? But they are. But one other thought, Gary, and I'm probably saying this to Gary as much as anybody. He can build two units per acre and not be annexed and not pay city taxes.
Sure.
I wonder if anybody's reached out to the actual developer. Does he even know that his industrial is not going to be an option?
You know, that, to me, that's the city's responsibility.
I agree.
He asked, he asked for that annexation. If, if terms have changed, he can unask. That's up to him.
Well, he'll get his chance at the workshop, at the Loudoun City workshop. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comments, although we do have to come back and revisit your issues from the letter that was sent, Gary. Okay, Jim Jenkins, come on back up. You've got three items.
We moved that he not have to reread.
Oh, he got that going without saying.
Motion to approve the seasonal paving.
Say it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. On item A. Any further discussion? No money involved. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve six B.
Second.
Got a motion to approve six B by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Dan, you're up for number-
Boy, Jim, that was quick.
That was quick. We got ten, we got ten any.
We got one more.
I, I just did. I said you're up for C.
Y'all have heard the conversation more than once about Old Stage. I, I've never ever known of a developer, owner, of anybody to work at trying to get a community on board with something like these folks have. I am tonight going to put in the form of a motion that we do remove the agricultural stipulation, and that we do add the used storage stipulation. Also, just like the other one, there'll be no access to Old Stage, there'll be no access to Shipley. It's already been established and said, but I've got the resolution with me that Jim had us for 30 days ago, and this resolution will be going to Jim to be rewritten. He will also, no Shipley, buffers on, 25 foot minimum. It's for this developer and owner only. It doesn't transfer. If he sells, they have to come back. Bear that in mind. Esquire Management, is that the name of it?
Yes.
Esquire Management. The vegetation and the fence, they have negotiated with the neighbors and talked to the neighbors about the vegetation and the fence. We can't get into vegetation fences, but I'm going to include that, that it was stated that the proper vegetation with the neighbors will be discussed and dealt with, and the fence will be dealt with. That will also be included in this resolution that we're passing. So all I just said is amended to this resolution that Jim had written for us. That, that in mind, I make a motion, we approve all the things I just said.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph for the Highway 11 rezon. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thanks, David and Jim.
Okay, Mayor Bradshaw.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. List is out. Is there any thing we can bottom off towards? We could take you down.
No, no, no.
Any of you have a question, I'd be happy to listen.
We got to do just exactly what this workshop, and now we got to go through and make the changes. Anybody that don't want to stay, if we're through with Old Stage, we're through with annexation, you're welcome to bail out, or you're welcome to stay and go through our committee list with us if you don't think-
Henry, that's after Tammy.
Well, see-
Might get surprised, won't they?
Two, two minutes, Henry, two minutes.
I'll talk Rosemary, please. Are you walking around Walmart or Eagles next? Just start adding two if you're walking to the-
I'll see you, email.
Okay.
About some sardines.
All right. Hold on. Cado, Mr. Cado.
How would sardines work into that, do you think?
As long as you're not setting by me, it'll be all right.
I'd like a nice salmon, salmon spread or dip we could put on.
Hey, John Martin? Take it outside.
Buddy, go ahead.
Which ones y'all want to talk about?
Every one of them.
It's gotta be. Adult and business board, adult and business board, we're good together. Everything's there. Agriculture extension, everything's there. You were going to find out about David Ferguson. That's the guy that used to own the airport in Loudoun. He sold it to Wiggles Bakery. We leave him on there, that don't matter to me.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, no. We got to change-
Well, I'm not turning the page yet.
Well, airport authority, changing John Manicas to you.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Charles Wells is gone. He's off. John Manicas is gone.
That's who you replaced.
Replaced by me, that's right. So we need my name on the list and not his. And I don't think we're replacing Charles Wells right now.
So we're leaving that open?
Just leave that one open for now.
It's an elite aviation circle.
I figured you'd see Charles Lindbergh's name on there, Amelia Earhart.
Everybody good? You got all that with Tammy?
Yep.
All right, Animal Control Authority, all we talked about, Heather Olson, needs to say shields now. And, well, and James Barrett Webb, I would assume was on Animal Control Authority due to his position as police chief. And if that's the case, now probably needs to be Sam Harrison or Brewbaker. Okay, Brewbaker's going to be it then? All right. The audit committee's fine, beer board's good. We need to eliminate the Blair Van Industrial Committee altogether.
Oh, wait a minute. Quick question, beer board. I think you already answered it.
Yeah.
David Gray is, he's up, but it automatically renewed.
We're, we're doing, tonight, we're adding David Gray right back for another term.
Three more years.
Three more years.
Three more years.
Yep.
Three more years.
He's desperately needed on that board.
He does a great job.
So you're saying you want to eliminate Blair Van altogether?
Altogether. There is no Blair Van Committee anymore. So it goes away, Tammy. Board of Zoning Appeals, we've got that one right now. Budget Committee's done. Here's the one not to get confused on, and get Buddy in trouble. Capital Projects. Mine's in green, I can't hardly realize. John Morrison's being added to Capital Projects in place of William Jenkins. So everybody's got that one. Rosemary Quillen is still the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors Committee, or whatever that is. If you get tired of that one, now I'll take that one.
Will you?
No. They'll all, wait if I do.
I'd attend one of them's then.
Construction Board of Adjustment Appeals, it, it is a necessary board after we did the whatever. It's a necessary board. We talked about Bob Maroney. You were going to make contact with Bob Maroney, Buddy?
I, I don't, I can't find him. Anita's actually looking for him.
I know him.
I know him. Well, we'll just leave him for now. You find out, because it's just one year appointment.
He still healthy and everything?
It's five years.
Let's leave him. He still healthy? He's been on it this long?
Well, it, I'm sorry, it's a five-year appointment, not a one-year appointment.
He's not, nobody on this board is even going to renew at this point.
Well, but if we've got people that shouldn't be there, which is-
Oh, I agree, I agree, yeah.
So we leave him Bob Maroney? As far as I know, it's never met. Eric Good, nobody knows who Eric Good is. Let's take Eric Good off.
Now, a lot of these are recommendations from Campbell, that he puts all these off.
Huh. Now, that's equalization board. This is not Campbell's. This is planning, where Jim go. This is a planning type thing.
Who you want off?
Eric Good. Eric Good, and, and does anybody, did anybody find out who Mike White is? Well, let's just, let's go ahead and take that off. We, we agreed. If nobody knows who these people are, there's no need to be on our board.
I agree.
So those will just be vacant for now.
So Eric Good is an open spot, Mike White is open, and we're leaving Bob Maroney.
That's correct. County Corrections Partnership, this is not the one that you're supposedly supposed to have. We can eliminate this one altogether. This was a committee that was put together to determine what our jail needs were. So eliminate that one altogether, Tammy.
Then it's done.
Nine, nine, nine one one board is what it is.
Just eliminate that one out of COVID, wait a minute.
Eliminating, start over, well, I like to. No, I won't say that.
That, that second name, I don't know about.
They don't either, Bill. Ethics Committee, Billy Pickle. I talked to Steve Cook today, Buddy, and on both his committees, he said yes, he would continue to serve. We'll get this other name in a minute. And Williams said last month he didn't want to be there, so that takes care of that one. Gary Whitfield is our, our Superior Economic Development Agency representative. I'm sure he wants to remain.
Jealous.
Here's the board you're talking about, Mike Campbell, and Mike Campbell said, leave the one seat open.
I think that one is, I may be wrong.
Well, we'll find out, but I don't think it is, because he wasn't appointed to Adam's daddy.
Yeah, definitely not.
Financial Advisory Committee. I cannot find anywhere that it's a required board. I don't know what it is, and I don't know what they do.
Have they ever met?
Not in my memory.
Chase, have you met with that group yet?
Have not.
That group's not met at least nine years, it seems like.
It's not in 57, if it is. I've looked. Now, that's not to say I couldn't find it, but I couldn't find a requirement for a financial advisory board or committee. If there's any doubt, leave it.
Let's leave it.
It's just a one-
Well, let's not approve it.
It's been up the last-
Let's not approve it, and then it come back next month, and if we need it, we keep it. If we don't, we get rid of it.
We can eliminate next month anyway, but there's something, it came up in the last two months. Oh, was it debt issuance?
Well, you'll find out, right?
Yeah.
So we're leaving that one alone?
Finds well.
All right, GIS board, it doesn't exist anymore.
It does not exist?
It does not exist. Ryan Janicola is our nine one one. Everybody has their own. Mike Campbell has GIS, nine one has GIS, L C U B has GIS, L U B has GIS. In the old days, there was only one, and they all shared. That was where the, the committee came from. No, no requirement. I can find anywhere to maintain a GIS board. My recommendation would say it just goes away altogether. Make a problem with that one?
Nope.
No?
Governmental Affairs, don't even know what it is. It's all commissioners, so it doesn't matter, I don't reckon.
Chase, have you met since you started?
Have not. Have you done anything since you got here?
We just get rid of it then, because it's taking a paper. So we're going to remove Governmental Affairs. I think this right here is considered Governmental Affairs.
Well, here it is. Governmental Affairs, gone.
Gone.
Ah, you just talked that story?
I can't find it if it is. See, you would think in, in C T A S, there would be a list everywhere of all statutory-
I'm going to make a motion on this one and the other, what it was to table.
Those two.
To table.
Till we find out.
It's the mayor's job now in the next meeting to find those two.
Financial, I'll tell you, it came up the last-
Well, you got another month to find out. You tell me to start looking on that.
So we're tabling financial advisory, and we're tabling-
Governmental Affairs. Right, till we know for sure. Industrial Develop, Industrial Bond Development Board, that is a required one. All the names on there, those people, as far as I know, are still breathing. And if one vacancy, I'm going to suggest Adam Waller to the board. Now, I've been here nearly 20 years, and I've known it to meet once. So it's not a real busy committee, but a commissioner on there is not a bad idea. Huh?
Get a commissioner serve on.
Absolutely.
Well, didn't we have Neeran down here serve on the C one?
Neeran's on C one now. Well, we're going to put Adam on unless you find out different.
All right.
Panel A.
Uh, yes, Panel A, September 28th.
Adam's going there?
Unless Buddy finds out different. Library Board, we don't have it. We take recommendations from them. Oakley River Regional, we take recommendations from them.
I'd like to add you to that.
I don't want to be on that. I refuse to serve on that. Litter Control Committee, Mr. Mayor, does, we do anything with the Litter Control Committee?
Part of our litter grant. I like way up near that.
I'm thinking you may be right on that.
You'll not pick up trash?
We get money every year.
Well, she said he didn't do my part, I mean, as in buying some donuts.
We get anywhere between, we get around 50, somewhere between $55,000 a year.
We get, we get a grant every year.
We get an annual grant on litter grant. We'll just leave it alone. It's all, it's all commissioners anyhow. Maintenance Committee, it's good. Planning Commission, we, we, it's all right. The Plan Commission's right. We just need to fix it on this list. At the very top of the list I've got in my hands- At the very top of the list, I've got in my hands, still have Pat Kalk on there.
She should be gone.
Okay, well, see, right, but I've still got this old list that I marked up on, so Leon, I mean, Pat's gone, Leon took her place.
Correct.
Then Leon goes away at the bottom, then Carly McArthur's gone. And that had nothing to do with any of those persons, they were the chairman of the city once, and we took the city reps off of our Planning Committee.
Then we got rid of Andy Hamilton.
Andy Hamilton is gone, that's right, replaced by Todd Keenan.
And all the others are staying.
Yes, yes. Got that one?
Yes.
Purchase Committee, we're good to go.
Great chair on that.
Hold on, man, hold on, hold on.
You need a piece of paper, is that electronic holding you up there?
Nope, I got it.
That high-tech electronics? I'm looking down there to see how many laptops has unfolded down through there.
Ah, see, you're about outnumbered now.
Well, there's none of them on. Boy, under the. Bill's looking at him, he is, Purchase Committee. Are you wanting to make some change there? Okay. Roll State Maintenance Operation, I'm gonna throw one out here. I would love to replace Tony Aiken with Buddy Bradshaw.
I like that idea.
We're sixty percent, they're forty percent, why wouldn't our county mayor be on that one?
Well, you've got, uh, two county representatives over there.
I don't care, we oughta have three.
Then that would take the city representation off all the years.
Susan Williams.
Yeah, you're gonna balance, you're gonna vote.
You scared? Are you saying, are you saying you won't take the spot?
They never meet.
Why, why start it?
Why don't you kick the.
Why kick the horse head?
Are we still, are we still considering that for a second?
A second.
Clerk's office.
It's in, it's in the talks, I think. I, I want.
There's, there's more conversation coming, let me assure you.
Well, the last time we talked, it sounded like it was everything closing the stable door.
Well, it is still an open office, it's just where it's gonna be, yet that's the only, we've not figured out which stable we're going in yet.
Same building, but just before you go.
No, the horse tells out the door, and it can't quite shut.
I think you say that Campbell's nose is over the tent. Is that the old one?
Okay, moving right along.
Thank you, Coach. Safety Committee.
What, what did we decide on, uh, Mayor Bradshaw?
Why, Mayor, they can stay out, they don't ever meet. Why are we picking a fight?
I'm not picking a fight. I just think our. He got, he got booted off as the president of E D A, or chairman of E D A. We're going to him right out of E D A chair.
We're leaving it alone, we're moving on.
Yeah.
Moving down.
Safety Committee.
Safety Committee, I don't even know what that is. Does anybody?
No.
It's got a lot of people on it.
They have a safety plan for their.
Yeah, department.
Each office, each department.
I have no idea, I don't know what the Safety Committee is.
Maybe they have a safety plan for their.
But you have Tracy Blair on there as budget director, that's gotta be changed to him.
That's insane, it's not gonna.
I'll bet she's not gonna participate.
We'll ask her to continue to come back.
She will not.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
I see her. Got that one?
Yeah, that's moving right along.
Salary bit, bit ad hoc.
That one should go away since ad hoc.
Ad hoc means when the job's completed, it ends. Does anybody know if that still needs to be?
Yes, we, every year, we do our insurance.
Yep.
That it's opportunities, closer to opportunities when it's, now, the past couple of years, we've not had it, but in past, we've had, we wanna offer our employees two levels. We wanna go with insurance payable board, yeah, that way all the department heads have to say in it, I want insurance company.
So can we just change it to the Benefits Committee?
No, there's no authority, I lay making recommendations all the time.
Right, but you're gonna change Benefits, not salaries.
Just leave it as it is. Moving right along.
Yeah, make a reservation. Executive Committee, looks right. Sheriff's Merritt Board, Steve Cook says, yes, he would continue to serve there, even though he didn't know he was on it. But he agreed to stay on it.
Yeah, he did.
He told me today at two o'clock, he said, I didn't know I was on the Merritt Board. I said, well, obviously you are.
It's called, we've never.
Cause my first question, has Buddy talked to you about this yet? And he said, no, I haven't talked to him.
So let's just wait, Mom?
Okay.
Solid Waste disposal committee, we know where that was at now.
Moving right along.
Surplus property, here's another one to be careful with. We're kicking me off of that one, adding William Jenkins to it.
No.
John Morrison.
Brandon Joe.
But we're also putting William on that and taking my place. Joe took William's place.
Okay.
Look, how is it written right there? Can you see how that's written?
I just have a different version.
Joe and William will be on the surplus committee, right?
Van's gone.
Okay.
Rosemary Quillen's on T C C A, best laid committee. P R B A Board, Henry, Buddy, Jimmy. Pass Board, Bill, James. Chip?
Chip.
Rosemary's, what, Vicious Bureau's gone, so there's not a board for that anymore either.
No, they kinda combined it with Chamber.
Eliminate the Vicious Bureau.
Yeah.
We gotta go, look. We need to add, Tammy, the Ad hoc Planning and Zoning Committee.
Hold on. Okay, not you and Adam?
That's me and Adam, and you can make it a, a one-year appointment. When our work's done, we'll quit. Then you have the Public Records Commission Committee.
And that's Darryl Tuck, Nancy Gregg, Van Shaver, Adam Waller, Tammy Galaher, Riley Montford, and Hank Fletch.
Yep.
Van services County Commission Rep, I service Genealogists.
Hank serves as a judge, Tammy Galaher has registered deeds, Nancy Gregg is just.
That large.
There is no such thing, but that's alright. Darryl Tuck's the historian.
What were, what was your name?
What?
I got, Adam, that's Genealogist.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
County Commissioners.
Darryl Tuck's the station.
I'll make a motion, we approve the new list as we just went through it.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the boards and committees. Anybody have a time you want some of that?
It's quick.
Yeah, we're five minutes long.
And, seconded by Commissioner Waller.
Is there a thing they told you it would be? Our meeting, great, fun, signed.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the boards and committees. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Hold on, one, real quick, uh, just an update, the Project Panda is now officially closed, it's owned property, uh, signed the paperwork. Like the first, the last ring, or the end of the fourth, but anyway, Project Panda's closed.
Can we now not call it Project Panda? Which one's Project Panda?
Two million dollars worth, how much we moving, we got there?
We got the check.
Yep.
We received the money, but I don't have that with me.
Let's just take a shot in the dark.
It's a little, no.
What is the deal with?
It's a little more than.
We just don't know what it is.
She don't know, she said.
The name of it, or what it's doing?
Which one is this?
It's, it's the DuPont paint place, I think.
Oh, that one, P N G, right.
It's the one we just sold a large part of Center Seventy-Five.
Back in the back of there.
Okay.
Well, I knew that had to be, being Loudoun, somebody, I could probably stop somebody on the sidewalk out here in that kind of.
Well, the Loudoun City Mayor told me, last Friday, Rosemary, I don't know if he told anybody else, but I was fortunate enough to run into the Loudoun City Mayor, and he said, let me tell you what's some great news, we sold Project Panda, y'all got your check already. Now, that didn't come from anybody in the county telling me that, I had to get it from the city. I don't know what that means, but.
It means we're good, we're good communication.
Okay.
Two million dollars plus.
My turn, uh.
Buddy, hold on. Mayor, you finished?
I am finished, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Satterfield.
Did he just pull rank on me to get ahead with it?
Yes, he did.
I thought he did.
R H I P.
Uh, the last meeting we had, I, I was under the impression that this, the, it's going to purchasing first, and then the budget, or what, I mean, what is?
Proper procedure for our policies, gotta, we go to purchasing, then the budget, then the workshop, and then come back for a vote.
Okay, but, uh, purchasing budgets are recommendations to the commission, and then they, they do the final one. So I'm assuming this next workshop meeting, we'll have.
Budget, person.
Yeah, we'll have something there, okay.
But when, when are we gonna get presentations to, from the people?
They're gonna come.
Next workshop?
And while, while I've got four, and I hope I'm not violating state law, but, uh, if I am, just tell the Attorney General to email me.
Yeah.
City Councilman from Greenback is back here, and I know, uh, probably everybody on the County Commission has received numerous emails concerning the rock quarry issue over in Greenback, and I'm trying to make this quick, is, if you could please somehow, like I've told everyone in my contact, I said, we can't do anything. We would love to do something, in fact, we would have already been on it like a chicken on a June bug, but it's a city issue. And I've told everybody that's asked me, I said, this is where the County Commission stands, but I said, we can't do anything until the city acts, or if the city wants us to help. So if you would relay to the city council that we are waiting with bated breath on whatever the action, do you know if there's, have y'all talked about anything yet, or any plans?
As far as we know, it still hasn't been sold, and there hasn't been any action on it. Um, if you were looking up right now online, it still isn't sold.
Well, go zone it. Zone it, zone it.
Give it to us, or confirm the zoning or something.
My, we sent, me and, uh, Bob Bowman, and Mayor Burgefield, and the Greenback attorney, we've all, we sat down, and that's been several weeks ago.
A number of weeks.
Jump on it and get the zone.
Two options, y'all zone it, or D N X it?
Anyhow, I, I just want to say, I know you people are in contact with you, and I, and we want to help, and I do too, I, I'm as, there's not any things come up that I'm more against than doing this into the city of Greenback, but, you know, uh, I feel bad when these people send you the emails, wanting you to do something, and I'm just, you know, I try to explain to them, there's not anything we can do yet.
I get a lot of emails, and I actually have a list going, and I'll put something out to them.
It's just, it's just like the Ukraine, we're sitting here just waiting for somebody to ask us for help, and we'll do that. Thank you, I appreciate that. We, uh, we hope we can get that knocked in the head. Thank you, and I apologize to the commission for bringing up something that wasn't on the agenda.
Wasn't on the agenda.
They all didn't say what you could do.
Okay.
Commissioner Whitfield, we've gotta clean up the letter we sent.
We do, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and really, we really don't have to do a lot, all we need to do, uh, is what I'm asking this commission to do is to confirm our letter that we have sent to the, um, uh, city of Loudoun, and I'd like to have that added, uh, to our record and to our minutes, um, just so we have a.
Is that in the form of motion?
It's in the form of.
Second, second. Give it to one of the others on lower in there.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to affirm the letter that we sent to the city of Loudoun, seconded by Commissioner Shaver.
No, wait, 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 who wants to say?
No, we, we, Chief.
James. Oh, was it James? I'm sorry.
Maybe it was a co-second.
Yeah.
Co-second.
Forgive me, Bill, but we're moving quick here.
Yes.
Gary made the motion. It's Gary.
Okay.
And then who's second?
Bill Jesus.
Okay.
Can you imagine?
Okay.
Look how much this lap slots.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excuse me, and you just want the letter put in the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
We voted unanimously to put it in the minutes.
Yes. Makes it, just makes it official.
Got it.
Oh, I have one other F Y I.
Oh.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Just, uh, the, the, uh, request for, what is RFQs or whatever, for the sewer project in Greenback have been sent, they were sent out a week or so ago. And I don't know if we've heard anything or not, but like I said, finally, we're, we're getting some movement on that, and hope that we can get, get some feedback to that pretty soon. I, my money's still there, it ain't.
I keep trying to get it, but in my account, it's too long, so.
You done?
Yes, sir, done.
Van Shaver, Commissioner Shaver.
Chairman, this will be the third month, fourth month, I don't know how long it's been. This is the E D A resolution I presented how many months ago. Has nothing to do with paying anybody, we're paying anything, all this is saying is, that as a seventy percent contributor to the E D A, if a conflict arises between the city and county, we would expect the E D A to lean toward the county's position, since we're paying all the money. We have, uh, Mr. Bradshaw, that used to be the chairman, it's not anymore, it's on the E D A, and we've got Mr. Whitfield, it's on the E D A, and all I would like to say, we're voting on this, put it in their hands, they can take the E D A board, and the board can't say, we haven't been told anything, because that's what you were told at your meeting. No communication, you didn't tell the board anything. It's in the form of a motion, a vote, to send that to the E D A.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to send a resolution to the E D A, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion?
Is this your original resolution?
Same one.
Same one.
Do you have anything in there about them reporting to us?
Nope, would you like to have something too?
I would.
How often, quarterly?
Yes. However, however.
How often they meet, bud?
Quarterly.
Or, we'd like to have a report back after each meeting.
That was brought up.
I'd like to get the whole issue squared away.
Mayor Harris said he would come quarterly to update.
Okay.
Director Qual said only if the board told him would he come.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I love.
The E D A board is that, only if the E D A board told him he'd come?
Well, we got two members of the board sitting here, one of them used to be the chairman, but it's not anymore.
I think we learned that already.
Why's he not the chairman?
He got voted out, man.
Like with Mayor Harris.
Well, he was out with heart surgery, not taking care of him, they voted him out.
Wow.
I'm biased, Jack.
So we're adding quarterly reports from E D A.
And they have to our contribute?
They will.
They will.
I will add this.
That, that.
When we get done, you come here, and let's see where we gonna put it.
Okay.
Is there anything?
If there's not any more ground that we can make up in this E D A.
If you'll give me a little bit longer, if you give me a little bit longer.
I would like to.
It's gotta be legislated, we can't do anything. We've done all we can, we give a two-year notice, and that's the top clock's ticking on that. What will happen in two years? Be up this body right here.
We propose that we added another county representative to kind of balance out, to go along with the funding.
Did the other two agree to it?
No support whatsoever.
Okay.
Maybe from the city of Loudoun.
We're working on it.
Alright.
Working on it.
Okay, the motion's out there, it's seconded out there. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done.
I will, as soon as Rosemary, we get done, she can come down and put wherever she wants to put here. She's been gonna do that for two months, and just happened to got two apparently.
I wrote my own thing.
Mr. Shaver, is that it?
I'm done, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Aaron Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. So, included in the packets that are online with Ms. Montford's packets that she puts on up, is a summary of financial reports for October. And there was also a debt report from the state, it's just indicating that we issued three million dollars in debt for the schools. There's no vote needed.
Alright.
It's a kind of report.
That's good. Commissioner Waller?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the bonds and nuteries under clause eight.
Second.
Seconded by Chase. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, before we, just before we get done, I, I don't want us to blow by this, this E D A, or this, uh, Center Seventy-Five land sale. Two million plus dollars are coming to Loudoun County.
Hold on.
From nineteen ninety-nine. Nineteen.
We just have paid all the bills associated with the sale, yeah.
Well, there won't be two million dollars worth of bills, right?
I don't know.
Hope not.
Really? Hold on.
Gary?
Yeah.
Buddy? You all, as our representative on E D A, you need to report to the board, and this board needs to address the clawback on Morgan Olson. In twenty fifteen, this body, and whoever was here in twenty fifteen, granted, well, I won't say that's not fair to say, but everybody thought they were granted the pilot, but anyhow, they got a big pilot, but it had clawback regards in it. By twenty twenty, they were supposed to have eighty percent of five hundred vote, or working there, I don't know how you address the fact that they just laid off over half their staff, but they owe some property tax back to the city of Loudoun, Loudoun County, because they did not fulfill what they said they were gonna do. So as our E D A board members, I would really like to ask you all to follow up with that at your next board meeting, or before, before their plum gone. You got it? Y'all good?
I want to hear you guys find out what their exact numbers were.